Looks like we've got Maddie. I see you Maddie. I saw Caitlin, I saw Joanna, I saw Sheldon. And Ellen, I believe you are on as well. Is that correct? You're on mute right now, Ellen.
Hey Gary, the board members can't unmute themselves unless they're co-hosts.
Well, then I will unmute it. Let me see. Can I? How do I unmute their audio?
There's a couple of options. Either in the participants panel, you can unmute, or if you hover over their names. I think I can start helping you.
Well, yeah, I'm going to unmute, but it won't unmute it.
It says unmuted. Can you hear me?
I got you. Yeah. Yeah, see, like I could unmute Joanna's, but I cannot unmute Ellen's. That's the one I can unmute. For whatever reason.
I'm having that same issue.
Yeah, I'm not able to unmute her either.
So Ellen, if you can hear us, you're gonna want to close out and then come right back in. Because I believe there's some kind of a technical glitch on your end. So she did. No. Oh, yeah, her computer's froze up, so.
Yeah.
We'll give her two minutes, and if not, Maddie, we'll have you start.
It looks like she's back, but I don't know if you can unmute her.
She's restarting. I don't think that's her. I mean, I don't know how she tried to close out.
Okay, yeah, now it looks like she's gone.
Here we go. Oh, you got her. There we are. So I still can't unmute. Ellen, you can hear us, can you? Thumbs up, you can hear us? Okay, we are having difficulty unmuting you. So let me see. Yeah, you're frozen up. You're... So what we'll do is, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. Maddie, do you wanna open us up?
Yeah, so we are calling to order the meeting at, what, 4:07 on May 19th, 2020. We need a motion to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
Okay, and now we have special recognitions. How are we doing this?
I'll share my screen, and then, since I'll be sharing my screen, I don't know. Does someone, Michelle, do you want to kind of keep an eye on making sure people are unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, and I can do some too, but in case the screen is taking, makes it a challenge.
So we're gonna do Students of the Month for April 2020 and May 2020. Why don't we start with Kennelworth Junior High School? Riley Mizola.
And so I believe Caitlin Spear is reading for Riley. Hey Caitlin, you should be unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Riley has been chosen as Student of the Month by her teachers because of her many extraordinary qualities. Riley is a top student maintaining a 4.0 GPA for both seventh and eighth grade, and gaining the respect of her teachers and peers along the way. Riley's math teacher, Ms. Rutter, shared Riley is very motivated and has a great sense of humor and is helpful to anyone in the class. She has great integrity and a good heart. Ms. Martin, Riley's PE teacher, gushed about the many qualities she's seen in Riley. Ms. Martin says she is thoughtful, kind, helpful, positive, outgoing, friendly, responsible, respectful, and creative. Riley has been a great student in class, always trying her best and wanting to beat her previous scores. She is self-motivated and encourages her classmates to do the same and is a leader by example and is always willing to help her peers along the way. Riley has opted to work as a teacher's assistant in Ms. Saldana's class this year in the place of her elective. Ms. Saldana shared Riley is a wonderful, sweet, and thoughtful person. As a student, she goes above and beyond. Her effort and quality of work are testament of her capabilities and diligence. I have enjoyed having Riley in class. She will be missed so much. Congratulations. During her years at Kennelworth, Riley was a very successful member of the track team two years in a row. Her favorite subject has been English and history, and Riley stated this because of how fun the teachers have made her learning experience be. As she moves on to high school, Riley is excited to have made it on to the freshman cheer team and is looking forward to swim team tryouts and joining student clubs. Riley is already considering her goals after graduating high school, including applying to Stanford University and pursuing either pre-med or psychiatry as a potential career field. Riley enjoys reading, skateboarding, and spending time with her family at the beach. Riley is an epitome of a good student and wonderful citizen. Good luck in everything you do, Riley. We know you'll go far, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Riley.
Caesar, let's see, I can't see all that. Hold on. Caesar Pua Puka Alvarez for April 2020.
Caesar has been chosen as Student of the Month by the Kennelworth teachers because of his academic excellence, strong work ethic, and responsible attitude. Caesar's teachers had wonderful things to say about him. Mrs. Bradley, Caesar's design lab teacher, states Caesar is a curious, respectful, and hard-working design lab student. This semester, he has pursued projects in 3D architectural drawing, film, editing, and pixel animation. And through each, he has shown great attention to detail and perseverance. Ms. Menares, Caesar's math teacher, shared Caesar is a hard-working student in our band's math class. He works well, well, in groups and individually to make sure he completes each assignment to the best of his abilities. Caesar has maintained an excellent work ethic during distance learning as well. Caesar is always polite and friendly in class and well-liked by his peers. At Kennelworth, Caesar placed into both the accelerated math class and the advanced English class for both seventh and eighth grades. Caesar has maintained a 4.0 GPA for both years and takes education very seriously. These are favorite subjects in school, and he has shared that his math comes naturally to him. He is looking forward to taking advanced classes in high school and expanding his knowledge base of this subject. As Caesar starts to plan his college and career goals, he is interested in studying mechanical engineering to put his math skills to good use. He hopes to apply to UCLA so he can stay near his family in California. When Caesar is not working on his academics, he enjoys spending time with family, friends, and has spoken highly of many family activities he likes to do with them, including playing cards with his dad, going on regular family camping trips, and riding ATVs in holster hills. Caesar enjoys riding bikes with his friends and playing video games in his downtime. Caesar shows pride and puts an effort in everything he does. He has gained the respect and recognition of those around him and has the skills to be successful in anything he chooses to do. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Caesar.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go to Petaluma Junior High School. Oh, I just heard Ellen.
Yes, I'm here. Sienna Dedman will be introducing Isabella Denise. Did I say that right?
I think it's Denise.
Denise, thank you.
Oh, okay. We are proud to present Isabel Denise as one of our April 2020 Students of the Month. Isabel is a highly capable and motivated individual with a passion for skateboarding. Isabel was born on January 12th, 2006, in the city of San Francisco and has been part of our district for most of her public school life. Academically, Isabel is a great student. She works hard to maintain her grades and has nearly all As on her middle school transcript. Not surprisingly, Isabel's teacher really enjoyed having her in class. Her math teacher's comment, Isabel is always prepared for class. She participates in class discussions and usually leads her math group in discussion and work. She is friendly, helpful, and courteous, and very bright. Her art teacher adds a number of adjectives that describe how she views Isabel. Amazing artist, creative, hard-working, motivated, friendly, positive, and a pleasure to have in class. Outside of school, much of Isabel's time is centered around skateboarding. You might see the strong and graceful girl practicing at the skate park in neighborhoods or around town with her friends. Isabel also enjoys playing video games after she gets her homework done. While at Grant School, she played clarinet in the school band, participating in every concert. In addition, she is an excellent sailor and loves to drive motorized cars. Isabel's goal in life is fairly simple. She plans to attend college, work a career, get married, and raise a big family. But importantly, Isabel intends to enjoy her life and be happy. Her mother and father add respectively. Isabel is a great kid, and I'm so proud of her academic achievements. She's diligent about doing her homework and spends a lot of time with her friends. I'm very proud of her and support all of her academic endeavors. Isabel is very sweet, kind, and open-minded. While academics are important, it is her essence of kindness, consideration, and work that makes her a well-rounded person. We are very pleased to honor this caring and hard-working young woman, Isabel Denise, to the board and are pleased to have her represent Petaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That was wonderful. Anthony Velasco?
We are very excited to present Anthony Velasco as one of our April 2020 Students of the Month. Anthony was born on March 29th, 2006, right here in Petaluma. He is a quiet leader with a great sense of responsibility. He is also a fine student and musician and a great role model for our school and district. Anthony has a sharp mind and an excellent grasp of Anthony is a very diligent student who earned nearly all As in more advanced classes and is constantly working on improving his study habits. His attendance is perfect. He's one of the top students in math. Anthony is patient and helpful to other students, so much so that his parents pay him to help his younger siblings with their schoolwork for three hours every school day. His teachers recognize his strengths, and one of them comments, Anthony is quiet but consistent in his effort. He is respectful, works hard, and regularly performs in class activities. Technology is Anthony's first love. He spends much of his spare time editing videos and building computers. He participated in science competitions throughout elementary school at McNear. He's also an avid chess player, recently winning first place in a chess tournament. He played clarinet in many band performances while at Petaluma Junior High School and was part of the performing arts program at McNear. All of Anthony's family is extremely proud of him and have this to add. Anthony is very kind, caring, hard-working, and willing to do what it takes to achieve any goals or resolutions. He is very respectful with us and others. He is the best example for his sibling. He's very independent and has never asked for any help for homework. He's very helpful with his siblings. He loves playing music, and we love listening to him play. There are a lot of nice things to say about Anthony. The list could go on and on. Any more proud to call him our son. We love him so much. Anthony Velasco is one of those unassuming yet brilliant students who always takes the high road. We are pleased to have him represent Petaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
Great, nice.
Yay. That was great.
That was great.
Next, we're moving on to CASA April. Charlie Sabella will be introducing Cecilia Aiden.
Yep. Okay. Cecilia Aiden has been pursuing a career as a ballet dancer throughout her duration of high school. Consequently, her future is slightly unorthodox due to her talent for ballet. She'll be joining the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater and following the training, the equivalent for traditional jobs, which will propel her to an extensive career as a ballerina. Her goal is to continue education throughout her professional endeavors as a ballerina, and as she is working towards being a journalist, once ballet is no longer a feasible option. She has loved school and learning all her life and wants to continue that thread in her future. Cecilia hopes that she can use her voice to inspire deeper empathy amongst the public and use her writing as a principle of justice as the global political climate changes and adopts. She is so honored to be nominated as Student of the Month and appreciates the recognition from her hard work. Casa Grande has been an incredible learning environment that has encouraged her to think critically and pursue deeper analysis of the world around her. Congratulations, Cecilia.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
And now Lucia.
Lucia.
Garey. Did I say it right?
Luthia Gray. Luthia will be attending UC Berkeley next year and looks forward to pursuing her interests in biology and expanding her horizons. Luthia loves to run and has competed in cross-country and track at CASA. She has also been a climate justice advocate for many years and founded the local Sunrise Movement chapter in Sonoma County. Luthia enjoys working closely with the environment and the community, and she has been a junior docent at the Auburn Canyon Ranch Preserve since 2013 and a leader of Sonoma County Junior Commission on Human Rights for four years. Luthia has helped organize and lead Petaluma's first Women's March in 2019 and was a youth speaker at the 2019 Press Democrat Woman in Conservation event. Luthia aims to combine her passion for science and her desire to help others in her future career. Congratulations, Luthia.
Congratulations, Luthia. And now, Petaluma High School April Student of the Month, Sienna Berry. We'll introduce Lauren Pullman.
Yes, Lauren Pullman is honored to have been chosen for the Student of the Month Award. Petaluma family is rooted in the local community, and she is a third-generation Petaluma High School student. During her time at Petaluma High, she got involved in the school community from helping to mentor freshman classes over the past two years through the Link Crew to co-founding the photography club on campus. She always strives to make a positive impact on those around her. Outside of school, Lauren is a highly competitive rower at North Bay Rowing Club and has competed in prestigious regattes such as the Head of Charles in Boston, Massachusetts. As the team captain, she tries to create a supportive and team growth. Throughout her high school career, Lauren has managed to be a successful student athlete while maintaining an over 4.0 GPA. She experienced a typical senior year. She knows life. Congratulations, Lauren. We are so proud and can't wait to see what you do in the future.
Congratulations, Lauren.
Congratulations, Lauren.
And now Stephen Cook.
Okay, Stephen Cook is a senior at Petaluma High School. Stephen has a passion for mathematics and sciences and is planning on attending a four-year university to study math. His passion for math is unbeatable, spending free time at home researching interesting math concepts. He has helped many of his classmates in hopes to put his mathematics skills to use as a tutor or teacher someday. He is currently enrolled in Calc BC and is a TA for Mr. McHugh in his Math III class. Stephen's hard work and dedication to his education shows in his 4.3 cumulative GPA. With the cancelization of in-class classes, Stephen has also offered free tutoring for math for students who need additional help. Academic success is only the first half of Stephen's achievements. On top of being a good student, he has been extremely passionate about music his whole life. Starting on the trumpet in fifth grade, he has slowly made his way to being one of the best high school trumpet players in Northern California. He has been accepted and plays in many prestigious ensembles, including the Sonoma County Honor Band, the Northern California Honor Band, and the Santa Rosa Youth Symphony. He also currently takes lessons with the trumpet instructor at Sonoma State and the lead trumpet player in the Juilliard Jazz Band. And this is the Upper Love as a concert band. He is the co-president of band along James D. Brokeay and has done a lot of work to get band students to try arts. He hopes to continue his passion in college as a music minor and hopes his art wins a certain We are so proud and can't wait to see what you did. Congratulations, Stephen.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Now, we will move on to May Student of the Month. We'll start with Kennelworth Junior High with Caitlin Spear introducing Taylor. You. Did I say that right?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay, well, we tried.
Taylor has been selected as Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is a joy to be around, is academically accomplished, and shows incredible personal motivation. Taylor is an impressive student and young person maintaining a 4.0 GPA and always willing to help those around her, making teachers and peers laugh and showing dedication to her own individual passions. Taylor works hard in school and then works hard every day after school at dance practice. Taylor has been involved in competitive dance with Studio C Dance Academy for years and puts in many hours of hard work to compete in four competitions every year. While this is a great passion of hers, Taylor also knows how important her education is. Taylor has managed to balance the work required to succeed in accelerated math, advanced English, and leadership during her time at Kennelworth. Taylor's teachers are very proud of her, including Mr. Russo, her PE teacher, who states, Taylor is a joy to have in my physical education class. She comes to my class early in the morning because of the zero period, ready to go. She has a good sense of humor and is an asset to the class. Academically, she is the best of the best, and she excels in math physical as well. Taylor has maintained an A+ in PE the entire year, which is not an easy task because you have to have 100% the whole time. And she does it all with an easy and outgoing demeanor. And she makes me laugh overall. Ms. Hill, Taylor's woodshop teacher, shared she is a very smart and adept and is adept at designing and making projects in woodshops. She has been one of the student tasks with helping others in the classroom, and she takes it very seriously. She is also a great teacher and an A+ student. At Kennelworth, Taylor's favorite subject has been science as she enjoys the labs, experiments, and hands-on learning. Taylor is looking forward to taking honors biology as a freshman and taking Spanish as her elective to begin learning a new language. While Taylor is still considering the many possibilities she could pursue after she graduates, she says majoring in dance is definitely one option for college. Taylor enjoys spending time with friends and family who find her to be energetic, extroverted, and enjoy her great sense of humor. Taylor brings positivity to the people around her and shows how hard work and dedication really pay off. Congratulations, Taylor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then we have Raulio Perez Hernandez.
Raulio has been chosen as Student of the Month by his teachers because of his perseverance, consistent work ethic, and kindness he shows to his peers. Raulio's teachers had many kind words to say about this excellent young man. Ms. Chavez, Raulio's English teacher, says he is an outstanding student. Not only does he do his very best with all his assignments, but he is also the second language learner and sometimes struggles with that, but he never gives up. He is kind and a wonderful listener. I could tell during every class period how hard he was working and really wanted to do his best. He is an all-around wonderful young man, and I have great admiration for him as a student. Ms. Fahey, Raulio's PE teacher, states, Raulio is always consistent with his work ethic. He never takes days off from working hard and doing his personal best. He is quiet, but a good role model for the others. His work ethic motivates the peers to do their best, and he is always very respectful to adults and his classmates. You will never hear Raulio complain about a workout or an assignment. His immersion Spanish teacher, Ms. Park, shared, Raulio is a very quiet, respectful young man and has been a privilege to have him in my class. He works well with others, and when he participates, you can tell he studies very hard at home. I wish the best for him in high school, and I hope he goes for the seal of by literacy because he is very capable of doing so. Raulio previously attended Loma Vista Immersion Academy and has continued his studies of our immersion program at Kennelworth. He is excited to receive the seal of by literacy when he graduates from Kennelworth and is proud of the hard work he has put in to be fluent in two languages. At Kennelworth, Raulio's favorite class has been Design Lab, and this has encouraged him to consider a career path in technology after his high school graduation, although he is keeping all of his options open. Raulio has many interests outside of school, including playing for the Petaluma Prisceno Soccer Team Soccer Club on the Copa Red team. Raulio enjoys playing video games and spending quality time with his family when he is not doing schoolwork. Raulio has shown the ability to overcome challenges, shows up with a positive attitude, and faces every task with personal determination. This young man has the personality needed to succeed in his life, and we are so proud of him. Congratulations, Raulio, for all your accomplishments, and we hope you go far.
Congratulations. Yes. Okay, our next speaker is Aleah Webb from Petaluma Junior High School. She has three introductions. Julia Calcada, I hope.
We are so pleased to present Julia Calcada as one of our May 2020 Students of the Month. She was born on March 28th, 2006, in San Pablo, Brazil. Julia is one of those unique individuals who faces the world with kindness, confidence, and curiosity. She came to Petaluma at the beginning of this school year directly from Brazil without a lot of English-speaking skills. And yes, in less than one year, she has not only become a part of the community, she has managed to maintain good grades in all of her classes and impressed her teachers with her motivation and natural intelligence. Julia really focuses on her academics. Even before she had a good grasp of English, she was earning straight As in science and math and is improving all the time. Her math and science teachers comment respectfully, Julia is a wonderful student. She completes all of her work and asks for clarification when needed. She helps her teammates during class and She helps her teammates during class and does all of this in a second language. She communicates in English very well and let me know when she knew she was going to be out for the day. And I am so pleased Julia has been chosen for this award. She has been such a pleasure to have in class. Julia is extremely hard worker and she always gives 100% of her effort to assignments. She is very bright and friendly and polite and respectful. I am so glad to have taught her this year and I wish her the very best in high school. Her teachers will be so lucky to have her." Although Julia hasn't had a lot of time to get involved in extracurricular school activities yet, she keeps busy with her church youth group and her family. In past years while attending school in Brazil, she participated in culture fairs, collected clothing and food for the needy, and campaigned against illegal and harmful drugs in youth. She enjoys reading, watching movies, and listening to music. Julia also spends her time riding her bicycle, hiking, and swimming. Someday soon, she looks forward to learning to play the piano and getting back into community service work. Julia is considering taking the opportunity to train as a Navals Officer when she is done with high school. Her mother is very proud of Julia, adding, "I see an incredible person with a big colorful heart. She is super dedicated and responsible about everything related to school and is so helpful around the house and also with her little sister and little brother. She definitely has her feet on the ground and understands about the difficulties of the world. She is extremely responsible, mature, but at the same time sweet and kind. She has really great plans for the future that deeply inside I know she will accomplish due to her hard work. It is fascinating to see her perspective around the world. I'm sure this girl will go places. We feel fortunate enough to have Julia be a part of the Petaluma Junior High and present this caring and hardworking young woman, Julia, to the board as Student of the Month for May 2020."
Congratulations. Next we have Danielle Sharp.
Petaluma Junior High School is very excited to present Danielle Sharp as one of our May 2020 Students of the Month. Danielle was born on November 2, 2005 in Sonoma County. She has been an excellent student and a wonderful asset at Petaluma Junior High for both years and we are proud to pass her on to the high school. Danielle is one of those hard-working yet unassuming students. She maintains nearly all As in rigorous classes, has a very strong work ethic, and is always ready to help others who need it. Her math teacher says Danielle is responsible, committed, polite, and always participate in class. What I admire most about Danielle is her ability and willingness to help other students. She is flexible, patient, and all above kind and respectful. Apparently, this is not the first time Danielle has received recognition for her academic strength and positive helpful attitude. She was awarded Student of the Month several times during her elementary school years. Dancing is one of Danielle's passions. For the past 12 years, she has had an outstanding student at Studio C Dance Academy, where she has learned a wide variety of dance styles, including jazz, ballet, hip-hop, point, and tumbling. And she performs several times a year. Danielle intends to continue her dance as a lifelong practice of strength, balance, grace, culture, discipline, and healthy exercise. At home, she really enjoys baking and is interested in someday becoming a chef. She also babysits. Danielle has become an amazing individual, one who has different interests and talents than her twin sister. Her proud parents say Danielle is a very giving and selfless person. Her kindness and considerate of others. He's becoming an excellent chef and a really good friend. We agree Danielle Sharp is one of our students who stand out as an excellent role model. We are proud to honor her with the title of Student of the Month.
Congratulations Danielle. And the next one, Tyler Yates.
We are honored to present Tyler Yates as one of our May 2020 Students of the Month. Tyler was born in nearby Santa Rosa on March 18, 2006 and has been in the district for the last two years. He is an all-around excellent student athlete and one who makes others feel good with his kind and generous spirit. He was recently honored for being the nicest guy in school and we can't imagine a better candidate. Tyler enjoys school, works hard, and earns good grades. His English teacher comments, "Tyler is one of the hardest-working students I have this year. He is also kind, helpful, intelligent, and eager to acquire knowledge." There have been many instances this year where he has taken time to help his classmates with their work and offer them materials that they don't have. He is also willing to redo work in order to master the learning objectives for an assignment. Lastly, he is a wonderful group leader who inspires group members to work their hardest. His presence in class benefits everyone. As an athlete, Tyler is strong, dedicated, and focused. Soccer is his primarily love and he plays both indoor and outdoor teams throughout the year. He is looking forward to playing football for Petaluma High School. In fact, Tyler plans to continue his competitive sports and be in good physical condition throughout his life. Tyler has many other interests. He is a part of the youth group through his church. He enjoys performing community service and helping out with other school events. Travel is a big part of his life guaranteed. Lastly, and most importantly, Tyler enjoys spending time and playing soccer with his family. His parents add Tyler is incredibly smart when it comes to school studies, but he is also very smart when it comes to people in life in general. He has always picked up things with an amazing speed. He is truly talented and athletic in just about every sport he has ever played. It is a joy and thrill to watch him. He is very funny and is the comic relief in our house. Also a great role model for his younger cousins and they love spending time with him. Not that I'm partial or anything, but he's a pretty amazing kid. Tyler Yates is one of those students who makes the world smile when they see him. He is a healthy, happy young man who shares his joys of life with others and both at school and the community. We are proud to have Tyler represent Petaluma Junior High as one of the Students of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations Tyler.
Next from Casa, we have Marceli Marquez and she will be introducing Taylor DiMartini.
Taylor DiMartini grew up in Petaluma attending St. Vincent's before transferring to Casa Grande at the beginning of her junior year. Taylor loves spending time with her two dogs and has volunteered at the Sonoma Humane Society throughout high school. Taylor enjoys spending weekends with friends, going for brunch, and taking trips to the beach. She has a close relationship with her family and likes to spend her free time with her parents. She loves watching movies and TV, which has become a favorite quarantine pastime. Taylor loves continuing to learn new things, including how to take care of bonsai trees. She has taken up embroidery recently. Next year, Taylor plans on attending the California Martine Academy. At Cal Martine, she will study medical engineering and plans to pursue a related career in the future. Taylor hopes to travel and find a job she loves following college.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, Cecilia Peterson.
Cecilia grew up in Petaluma with her twin brother, older brother, mom, and dad. She spends her time focused on schoolwork, work, and hanging out with her friends. Her work ethic at Casa Grande paid off because she will be attending Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in the fall, hopefully, studying environmental management and protection. Cecilia grew up with many animals in her household, such as fish, lizards, hamsters, cats, and dogs. They highlighted the passion she has for animal rights. She chose to become a vegan almost three years ago in protest against the inhumane treatment of animals around the world. She has become very invested in the life of our planet and hopes in the future she can help sustain it. Away from school, Cecilia is a barista at Casa Grande where she started as a dishwasher at age 15 and now is a well-respected employee who serves her community delicious coffee. She likes to spend a big chunk of her time with her friends, going on crazy adventures and trying to soak up as much time with them before they depart after high school. After college, she would like to serve in the Peace Corps in order to help developing countries become more sustainable. Once she returns, she will begin a career involving the environment and hopes to travel the world and visit new places and immerse herself in other cultures.
Congratulations Cecilia. Now we have Petaluma High School, Sienna Barry. And she will be introducing Marisa Temple.
All right, Marisa Temple is a senior at Petaluma High School. While attending Petaluma High, she has been involved in her school community by playing basketball in badminton, participating in clubs, and representing her school in a number of ways, including at the 2019 Pal Conference. She was even voted co-captain of the varsity girls' basketball team this year alongside two of her fellow seniors, which was an honor. Aside from her school commitments, Marisa is an active member in the dairy industry. As a third-generation dairy farmer in the Tu Rock Valley, she has spent every summer for the past decade showing her cows at local fairs and her background in agriculture has helped shape her into who she is today. Marisa is a very dedicated student. She has challenged herself every year by taking advanced placement in honored classes. With a total GPA of 4.27, she has spent the last four years focusing primarily on her academics in order to prepare herself for college. Marisa plans to attend San Diego State University in the fall, where she will pursue a double major in accounting and environmental studies and a minor in interdisciplinary studies. Additionally, she will continue to challenge herself in college by being a member of the Weber Honor College at SDSU. While she isn't sure where her studies will lead her career-wise, she is very excited for the opportunity to further her education and would like to thank all her teachers from the past four years for instilling a passion of learning in her and pushing her to do her best. We are so proud and congratulations Marisa.
Yes, congratulations Marisa. And now Hector Sostennis Salgado.
Hector Sostennis Salagdo is a senior student at Petaluma High. He was born in Petaluma but has moved in between Petaluma and Cattati. However, he has always been a Petaluma student. His main interests are history and cultural studies, such as languages and cultures. He also loves graphic design, art, and music. He has always been interested in those things, even as a junior high student. He aspires to learn about other countries and maybe even learn a few more languages. Going to high school for the first time was intimidating for him because he didn't know what to expect, but thankfully it's been a wonderful experience. With the friends he has created and the teachers that have helped him out tremendously throughout the years, he is very thankful for all of them. He can say that his time at Petaluma High has been a very interesting time in his life. As for the future, Hector is planning on going to Santa Rosa Junior College for the first two years and then later finishing the last two somewhere out of state. He already has options. He aspires to become a historian as a career since this is in his passion. This is all thanks to Mr. Cochran. As a junior in his class, he inspired Hector through his teachings and his wisdom. He led up an already burning love for history and cultures and expanded it. Hector thanks and respects him. If history does not work out however for him, he will choose graphic design since this is something he thinks he is decent at and loves doing. He wants to thank Mr. Schwartz because he has always been a huge help learning new techniques he is still using. Hector only hopes his future will improve and he is honored to be the Student of the Month. Thank you Hector, we cannot wait to see what you do. Congratulations.
Congratulations Hector. And last but never least, we have the PAC Student of the Semester introduced by Annie Larson. Start with Annika Greggs.
Yes, saving the best for last, thank you. Annika Greggs, you, oh Annika, where do we begin? Between your care for others, your drive to succeed, and your sense of humor, we're so thankful to have Annika as our student at PACS. Annika is the student who will take any task and complete it with 110%. She goes above and beyond in all that she does, whether it's helping peers, being a leader, or studying for a test. Annika cares deeply about her academic performance and earns high scores in all subject areas to maintain a steady 4.0 GPA. She does not give up when faced with a challenge and it's been wonderful to watch her grow as a student. In addition to her academic studies, Annika is also extremely creative and has excelled in drama, music, and art at PACS. She is a student who gladly accepts leadership roles to help better our school and lift up her peers. Annika continues to serve community service hours at Meadow Elementary School, helping teachers and younger students. We know that Annika will achieve great things as she moves into high school. Thank you for being an exemplary middle school student. We'll miss you, Annika.
Congratulations. And now we have Leslie Munoz Perez.
Leslie Munoz Perez. Leslie, first of all, congratulations on receiving a full-ride scholarship to Sonoma Academy for all four years of high school. Yes, you put in endless work studying for tests and preparing for your interview. Nice work, you deserve it. Leslie is amazing at balancing her academic life with her personal life while keeping a 4.0 GPA. She's very committed to serving her community by completing volunteer hours at the Petaluma Regional Library. She works incredibly hard in all subject areas and is never afraid to ask questions when she needs help. While school is very important to her, Leslie also knows how to have fun while she is learning. She is wonderful to have in class each day because even though she takes school seriously, she can also laugh and enjoy herself. Though the on-campus semester has been cut short, Leslie was involved with an ambitious engineering and programming project in advanced robotics for the county competition. She is a member of the PACS band and seems to enjoy music and performing. She will receive the first annual PACS Outstanding Musician Award at the end of this year. Leslie is a great role model for all and we're so lucky to have her as a student at PACS. We will really miss her smiles and enthusiasms next year. Congratulations Leslie.
Congratulations.
So, is that, I believe that's our last candidate?
That is our last candidate.
I want everybody to, hang on for a minute. Really want to thank everybody for staying on to honor such amazing, amazing students. And I want to tell you, all of you students, that you really represent everything that is so special about our school district. And because you stuck it out, I'm going to throw a little tidbit out to you. You're actually going to see this, this is coming out to our families as part of a very long conversation that I videotaped today. It'll be going out on Thursday about what school will look like next year. But I want to show you the video that will now be our entrance to our website in the future that we've put some work into and you really exemplify everything about this video. And so Ashley, you want me to run it or are you going to roll right into it? I'll go ahead and roll right into it. So let me share my screen. And this is for you guys, all of you students that we are so very, very proud of. You represent, you really do represent this. You represent, you really do represent this. Great job, everybody, and thank you for everything that you've done this year to be Students of the Month.
We have one more thing, comments from the public?
We don't have any comments tonight.
We don't have any comments tonight, then I officially adjourn the meeting. Congratulations to all the students. You guys are awesome. My Zoom is frozen once again.